...session for Monday, March the 4th, 2019. We have three items on our agenda tonight, the first of which is the curb replacement program. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crass will be making the presentation on this item before he starts. I just always want to caution the council on projects like curb replacement and street preservation. Because sometimes I forget about it as well, we've gone from an annual budget for curb replacement of $150,000 to $600,000. There is still a long way to go. And what I would remind the council is, this is, curb replacement and street preservation are the classic public projects that are irritating to everybody because they're massive, and we're addressing them with limited resources to try to get as much done as we can in any given year. We are never going to have, unless we devote the entirety of a bond issue to it, we are never going to actually be in a situation where every foot of curb in town is done. There will always be more work to do. With that said, the whole goal of this one is, we've been analyzing the curb replacement program that we've been doing for the last couple of years, and keeping pretty close tabs on the concerns that are being weighed in by citizens to you all and to us directly, and would like to propose a possible alternative to the council for your consideration as we move forward in the next couple of years with curb replacement, and then analyze the success of that particular, how we're addressing that particular program. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mayor members of the council, want to provide a little more background to what Mr. Fearborn outlined, kind of what our approach has been in the past to this, to this program. It's been very similar to what we do with the street preservation. We go through citywide, and we survey all the curbs, we assign a severity number, one to three, three being the worst, one being the best, and then develop a five-year plan based on available resources for what, and identify areas in every, every one of those years, and kind of lay out our long-term CIP for the, for the curb replacement. Then as we, as time comes to do, to actually prepare the project, prepare the project for bid, we'll go back into that area and reevaluate. And what we are finding is, unlike the, the street program, that the condition of the roads is fairly static. It has a very shallow decay curve, so we know that things are going to last longer. What we're finding with the curb is the curb has a very steep decay curve. And so we're finding, when we go back in another year, there may be 20 or 30 percent more curb that needs to be replaced than when we originally did the program. So what that then does is impact the schedule. So when folks have called and said, "When's my curb going to be replaced?", well, you know, you're programmed for 20x, and we get set back, all of a sudden it's two years, maybe two years or more before we're able to get into that neighborhood. It, it's not, it's frustrating for everyone. And so what we are proposing with the change here is to divide the city into maintenance zones, very similar to what we do with our snow removal program. So it's from 58 Highway to, to the north limits, from 58 to Lucy Webb Road, and from Lucy Webb to our south limits. Those are our three major maintenance zones. What we propose to do then is, as part of the programming, is we'll go into each one of those zones on an annual basis and look at the curbs, and determine where the most severe areas are, where we need to dedicate our dollars. And the difference that we're proposing is, rather than just do it as a patchwork, because we know it's going to decay so fast, is do it on a block-by-block basis. That's the way the curb was put in, it's all the same concrete, it's all going to deteriorate. And so we think that's a, rather than the patchwork where we do one, one patch and then come back two years later and continually disrupt neighborhoods, we're also going to be prioritizing curb program based on other maintenance that's going to be occurring. If we have some other projects, we'll kind of coordinate everything, so we just disrupt, disrupt the neighborhood once, you know, a season. We'll do the curb, we'll do the mill and overlay, we'll do whatever else needs to be done. What we've provided with that is a, is a map of what the proposed 2019 program would look like. We will still reserve some dollars, as we have over the past few years, for isolated areas in front of driveways or things like that, so we can, we can address those. But that is the, that's what we are recommending that we move forward with for the next few cycles here, and then we can reevaluate how that, how that is proposing, or performing, rather. With that, I'm available, Greg and I are both available for questions.
Anyone? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question on the map you have here. These are the actual streets that are going to be following this new program in 2019?
Yes, sir.
The yellow ones? Okay, perfect. And then for Cedar Ridge Drive, is that the entrance, the island at the entrance?
That's, yes.
Okay, yes, that is tore up pretty bad. And then I just had a quick question on the program itself. Moving forward for new development, would they have to put in the new highback style?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was, thank you.
Mr. Holman, did you have something?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, sir. Mr. Crass, I know a couple of years ago, we, like I said, we changed to, or back to the, the highback curb for a couple of reasons, one of which is going to get less exposure from UV because it's not facing directly up like the rollback curb is. And I know prior to that, I believe we changed our aggregate, we found that we were having deterioration a little faster, I believe, when we changed away from the local aggregate to some imported stuff, we had a little bit better success. Are we still seeing those same results with, you know, we've got the better aggregate out there in the highback, it's deteriorating at a slower rate, or it's taking, it's got a longer life than what the other stuff does?
Yeah, yes. We continue to see definite improvement in the compressive strength of the concrete. Within the subdivisions, it's been a relatively short period of time that we've made those changes. On our public projects, we made the change in about 2007, 2008. Within the subdivisions, it's been about three or four years. We haven't had a lot of subdivisions go in, but we are, we are not noticing any premature failures in those areas.
And then another thing that I had, first of all, I think what you're proposing here makes sense to me, to do an entire block or neighborhood, if you will, much as we do the street program. If someone asks, "So, well, your area as opposed to, you know, this section of curb", that makes sense to me. Now, will we still do, I assume, emergency basis, people's drives and that thing upon request?
We'll have a pool of money set aside to, to address that.
Okay. And then the other thing was, have we ever considered, or is it impractical to add a sealer to this to extend the life of the concrete? I know people do it with their driveways sometimes. There seems to be kind of a pro-con argument as to whether there's a lot of value in that, but it may be just operationally problematic for us, or maybe there's not that much value, but I thought it was worth asking.
Where, where it's really starting, it's, it's not on the surface. So where, where it's, where it's starting on the older curb is where you have the, where we have the joints. And the water gets into the, into the joints, and there's really not, or it'll, there'll be some little stress cracks here and there. So putting a superficial sealer on it really isn't doing it. It's the moisture that's getting in and around the aggregate.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Berensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Holman, you answered, or asked my sealer question. I know I've already asked you that once before, and I was going to ask if there are any other best practices for curb preservation, other than that, than any other cities using to make these last longer?
I think the aggregate change is really it.
That's the best thing going?
Yeah, that is, that's the best thing.
And then, I know this could possibly be more expensive or less expensive, but will this, will there be any cost savings in here per foot, because we're doing more, we're concentrating on one run at a time? Is there any cost savings baked into this in any way at all?
There'll be a little bit because of mobilization.
Okay.
So, yeah, there'll be a little, because they're all working in, they're working in one concentrated area versus 20 feet here, 20 feet there.
And of course, concrete prices are probably going up as we sit here right now, too, so...
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Circo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Crass, I talked with Mr. Fearborn earlier in the summer, we had some of these, and this makes sense, when I told the people, "We can't take this new highback curb and try to patch it in, because it just wouldn't work with the other curb that's, and they understand." But I do look at this and think, the positive on this would be, on the snowplows, for one, and when the water, when I see a lot of heavy runoff on the old curbs, it runs down and gets up into the yards, and it's, and the water drains behind that yard in the concrete, and I think will cause erosion a lot more quicker than this would. I think this would maintain that water inside that concrete base going down the street, it won't get up in the yards and soak into that, which is, to me, is a positive.
It certainly has more capacity than, than the rollback curb.
Yeah, to keep that, yes.
Anyone else? Okay.
And, that being said, if the council is okay with it, we will be bringing, when we bring the resolution to you all for this year's plan, it will be using this map, if you're all okay with that. Very good. That concludes this item, sir.
Next item on our agenda is the right turn lane at Foxridge and 58 Highway. Mr. Fearborn?
Mr. Crass?
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mayor's members of the council, the MOU that we have with Cooper Communities regarding the Creekmore Development calls for a right turn lane southbound at Foxridge Drive and 58 Highway. That was identified in the transportation plan that was done for that development. The thresholds have now been met. We are starting to see a lot of delays with the right turning movements for the through movements. We looked at a couple of options. One, one was moving the curb in front of Dairy Queen to the, to the west and creating the actual traditional turn lane there. Got into a lot of utility conflicts, a lot of costs with having to relocate the signal and some other things. So we took another look at, could we restripe it? And the way the signals are, and all of the heads, and the width of the road, we can restripe it. And so what we are proposing is the continuation of the mediums that are in the Creekmore Development, create more of a, kind of a more aesthetically pleasing entrance north of 58 instead of that large sea of asphalt, and putting in some trees that would be maintained by the city. And so we have the plan that has been designed by the developer in front of you here, and wanted to bring it forward for some feedback.
If I could dovetail off of that while you all are studying it, we had originally thought, and Mike, I always forget that, we essentially thought that the lanes, as they lined up, would not allow for, for anything but a right turn lane in front of CVS. Mr. Rocos did a great, did a great job, and did a great deal of study on it, and we realize now that the, whatever that word is...
The cone of vision.
Thank you. No wonder I forgot it. That the cone of vision does allow for the camera to allow for the, the turning movements and the through movements that, that this particular diagram would allow for.
Anyone? Townsend, sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on, as I see this, we're just removing one of the northbound lanes, we're just starting that merge, eliminating the merge from two to one, and just one lane. Not related to the, it's just out of curiosity, the four plexes on the west side, east side of the street there, the, what looks like a driveway is actually parking, parking stalls. Has there been any accidents or anything like that from residents thinking at night that that's an actual drive, and driving off of the curb that's into the street, or is that just...
I've, I've never heard of one. Some of them do it.
Okay.
Not really recommended, but...
Correct. It's just odd that, to see it designed that way, and there's no barrier to prevent the traffic from that happening. I don't know if that's something we could...
Well, until we put in a highback or curb.
Exactly. I think these are highbacks.
They are.
Are they highbacks already?
And they will feel that you're not on the driveway when you make that turn.
Sure.
It was just a curiosity on that.
Sure. The accidents we had, we have had some accidents there, but it was prior to posting it no parking, where vehicles were parked, and because of the width of the asphalt there, folks assumed that it was four lanes, and we did have a couple of rear-end accidents in front of those four plexes. But since then, we have not had any.
But not for the pullout, just because people were on the turn lane?
Well, the car was sitting on the street, in essence.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a huge fan of these boulevards, and one of the reasons is, is that it's a, it's a great way, if somebody has an accident, or car trouble, or something of that nature, it's just, it's just, it creates a road, roadblock or road hazard. Is there any way to do that? Let's see, you've got the trees and all that there, is there any way to do it so you could still have the division, but would be able to, to drive over it, be able to move around over it? Because I know that's a, it's a real pain, once you get into the Creekmore subdivision, but this area right here, I wonder, could we design to move around if you had to?
Mike, even though you can't see it on here, it is two lanes there.
It's not, not quite two lanes, it's, it's more like, it's more like Johnson Parkway, where you can, where you can maneuver, you know, that's, it's not officially two lanes, but if there's, if there's a car stopped, you can get a second vehicle by. The width between the curbs is about 16, 16 feet, so you can, you can sneak a second vehicle in.
Even if you look at the transition to Creekmore, you can see that there's a lot more concrete there, or asphalt. Anyone else?
Mr. Circo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think this is a long time coming on that, especially heading south and taking, and going west on 58. I like that idea, because there's so much traffic backs up, there's only a straight lane or a right lane, especially in the evenings, and they back way up. So I think this is a great idea to have that right turn heading west, to keep that traffic from backing so far back. I like this idea.
Mr. Holman?
Thank you. Yeah, this seems reasonable to me. One thing I might ask, and perhaps you already encompass this in your engineering studies and review, but obviously a highly trafficked intersection, we're going to be changing traffic flow at least a little bit slightly here, and people are creatures of habit, so I would really like to see, after this is done, kind of a monitoring by staff, if you will, for, say, a six-to-12-month period, did our accidents go up? Did the police write more tickets there? Were we having any issues from the citizenry because we changed the traffic? Or was it the standard two-week to one-month period, and then everybody got used to it, and it worked as it, as we planned it to? But it looks pretty good to me.
Couple of things to address the last two remarks. Maybe one of the other things that we could get with Cooper on, because Cooper actually worked very close with us on designing this plan, because they liked the idea of the nicer entrance, rather than what's up there. This is, this is more of a parkway. But one of the things that we had been knocking around for a relocated Kentucky was not even rounded median curb, but actually flat with grading. If we went with lesser in the middle, and there was truly an emergency and somebody couldn't get around, somebody just did a dead stop in the middle, would that be a possibility for here, Mike?
Excuse me. We'd like to have some kind of a barrier with the curb there because of the trees.
Sure.
And so we can, we could look at, rather than a six-inch curb, we could look at some kind of a modified curb, curb on the back, similar to what we're, the, the shorter curb that we're putting in, and when we're, when we're retrofitting. So we could, we could look at a couple of those options with regard to the curb height.
Okay. Thanks. And the, the second one escapes me now, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, but remember, one of the critical elements, too, to the intersection accidents there will be potential future development on the south side, because one of the largest accident counts that we get there is people making the right-hand turn going north out onto 58 because of the little bit of a hill that's there. So the, any future development on the south side, they're going to be required to put in a right turn lane at that location as well. That'll be a big help as far as this particular intersection is concerned, because there are many more accidents attributable to that.
Yes, Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give my opinion. I think it'll make that area look nicer. I do understand, I talked to somebody at lunch today that lives in Creekmore, and they were talking that there are very few places to turn around if there is something happening on that, on that boulevard, but I think boulevards are, are very eye, you know, pleasing to the eye, and it will reduce some of the diagonal driving that people seem to want to do, where they want to go, wherever they want to go, whenever they want to, instead of following the lines. So I think that's, that'll be helpful for some drivers, but it'll look great going in. Thank you.
I'd add one more. What would the speed limit, is that going to change? Is that going to continue to be the, isn't it 35 through there?
We'll maintain that speed limit.
Which I think it should be 25. For the golf cart, right? Well, you ask Mr. Fearborn, he has to pull out of it all the time.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Holman?
Just one other thing, and then Council, Councilman Barber's comments are well-taken. We hear frequently from, as he stated, residents within Creekmore, that they don't like the long boulevard, you can't cut across, if somebody's stopped in front of you, if there's an accident, it gets bottlenecked. But this section through here, although we wouldn't highly encourage it, there are many outs across private property if you get jammed up. The, what I call boulevard section with the trees has the division in between the set of five or four trees here, and you've actually got it out on either side, right or left, through private property, and you can actually loop back around if there were a pileup or an accident in front of you where they weren't moving or waiting for the police or something like that. So I think this is workable. But I, I know the pain, because I hear about it as well.
Anyone else? Mr. Circo?
Yeah, one other question. Now, these are going to be just natural, full, I mean, trees are going to have these grow up, not bushes, three, four-foot bushes? Are just going to go put trees in there so they'll get eight, 10, 20 feet tall? Back in here in the new section, are those actually trees, and not bushes?
No, those are trees, sir.
They're all trees, okay.
Anyone else? So we're going to move forward with...
We'll proceed accordingly.
Okay.
Let me rephrase that, we'll have Cooper proceed accordingly.
Okay, all right, there you go. And the last item is the proposed new code for open burning. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Catterett will be presenting this item. The genesis of this item began when we were approached by South Metro, along with the county and several other cities that South Metro serves. The upshot is, as indicated in Mr. Catterett's memo, is, this used to be, South Metro used to hang their enforcement efforts on state statute. The state is pulling that statute and will no longer be the defining agency with this. And so we were approached by South Metro, along with the other cities in the county, to become the defining entities that they could then hang the, the rules on, if you will. They will still be the enforcing agency, however. Mr. Catterett?
Thank you, sir. So yes, the state regulation that governed the open burning, that change becomes effective at the end of, end of March. And so it was South Metro that approached us, the Lake Winnebago, and the county, for what area they have territory over, to try to come up with a unified code that would mimic what is currently in place in the state regulations. Didn't want to change what the, what the regulations were, didn't want to increase them or decrease them, wanted to simply utilize the same regulations. The, with the change of the state regulation, it did indicate that local communities could adopt regulations, if they wanted to still govern the open burning. So the authority is there. And working with South Metro, we did agree that we should, as a community, look at putting into, into effect an ordinance that would regulate open burning. So what we propose to you, that's part of the packet given to you this evening, is a, is a new chapter of code. It would be Chapter 285. It would be titled Regulation on Open Burning. And again, the, all the regulations that are contained within this proposed ordinance, the definitions, and all the restrictions, and the setbacks, et cetera, are all taken directly from the current regulation of the statute. But in general, it's going to ban the open burning of household waste. It's going to ban the open burning of construction and demolition waste, and other similar materials, again, listed in the ordinance. What it will allow is the open burning of vegetative waste, so clearing of trees, brush, what is typical vegetative waste from a property. It also would allow the burning of untreated wood. So if you have an old building that you were taking down, or something with untreated wood, you would be allowed to continue to burn that material. This is all, as long as certain conditions are met. And the principal condition is that the open burning cannot take place within 200 yards of an existing structure, other than your own. So if there's any existing structure that's within 200 yards of where you're going to do your open burning, it is prohibited. The one exception to that would be if you utilize a specific, I think it's an open, get the right term here, the air curtain incinerator, apologize. That's what's utilized typically on construction sites where they do land clearing. If it's a large amount of land clearing occurring, they'll use an air curtain device. That actually could be utilized by an individual if they had approval to do that, not likely that they would go to that expense to do that. Bottom line is, if you have been able to burn on your property the last, you know, several years, you're still allowed to burn your property. If you haven't had that right, you still do not have that right. We're not changing the restriction, the 200 yards is still in effect. The only thing that we have done different from the regulations is, upon the request of South Metro, just for clarification, looking at the fire pits and patio fireplace provision, indicating that, of course, you're allowed to have a, you know, a, a fire pit or a patio fireplace. You can burn the small twigs and branches and untreated wood. Don't want you to burn leaves as part of a fire pit or a patio fireplace, and certainly no household waste, just clarifying that. I think that's what they're really looking for. They, they, of course, get a lot of calls on that particular item, and so they thought, let's place that within the ordinance. Everything else, the land clearing provisions, all the other requirements are from the current regulations. So that's what we propose for discussion this evening. If we get the support of the council, we'd like to place it on your agenda, first reading in March, to get second reading approved, and the ordinance effective April 1st, so there's no lapse in having those regulations in place. So that would conclude staff report.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Berensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Catterett, in here on the definitions of open burning, it says, "The burning of materials where the product or combustion emitted into the air are committed, emitted in the air without passing through a chimney or a stack." I know we have a separate section here for fire pits, but by that very definition, that would, that would eliminate fire pits. I mean, by that standard, if I take the grill off my, the lid off my grill, that would be a, that would be not permitted. Do we need to change the definition of open burning, or do we need to put an exception in there for fire pits and barbecue grills?
What I look at, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I don't necessarily disagree, though I think of a chimney or a stack as actually part of a fireplace, unlike a fire pit. I think that's how I looked at, that if you actually have a true outdoor fireplace that has a true chimney stack...
Right.
That is allowed. I see the fire pits, I guess what I look at, we're not defining fire... I think that's how I looked at that, if you actually have a true outdoor fireplace that has a, a true chimney stack.
Right.
That is allowed. I see the fire pits, I guess what I look at, we're not defining fire pit or the patio fireplace, per se, but I don't see those as having a chimney or a stack typically.
It's concerning for me, because we're, we're not the one enforcing it, we're making the law, and then allowing somebody else to interpret it and enforce it. So I, I wanted to make sure that we were concise on that and, and accurate. And I guess the other question is, you said 200 foot from the nearest structure, other than your own home?
200 yards.
Yards, okay.
Yes.
I misheard that, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. And the 200 yards, sorry, was, that was the state statute before, we're just readopting that.
Correct.
So if I understand you correctly, I can have a fire, the 200 yards does not apply to my home, but just other structures?
That's correct. So yes, you could have the fire, the open burning closer to your own structure than 200 yards, but not a structure of another property.
Okay. I've had several bonfires over the past at my property, and sometimes South Metro was nice enough to come out and help me understand the laws. I'm just trying to understand them better tonight. Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Mr. Holman?
I have a question. So South Metro is the chief enforcement arm of this. If there's something, if there's a call that comes in, we, our police are going, our dispatch center is going to send them, our police don't go, our police are not going to write citations on this. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Our police may go, but they're not going to write the citation, that's up to South Metro.
And if they, so yeah, do we know historically, what stories I've heard, mostly they go out and put out the fire. I've never heard of an instance where they actually write a citation. Do we get many through the municipal court that way? Do you know?
I doubt it.
I, I've never heard of them writing the citation.
I think, I think very, very similar to community development, they try to get compliance, they go out, they talk to the folks, they tell them, hey, you can't be doing this, they watch them put it out, and they drive away.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anything to add to that?
That's all, sir.
Okay. So I guess everybody's good with moving forward with this, since it's actually, the state statute is going away, we want to kind of, South Metro is the enforcement arm on this, we want to keep them gainfully employed.
Yes.
There you go. That concludes the, the items A through C. Item D is other. Does anyone have anything else to bring up at this time? If not, we do have an item due for executive session, so we'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, move that we go into executive session to discuss real estate matters as authorized by Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsection 2.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you. Motion been made and seconded. Could I have the roll call, please? Councilman Townsend?
Yes.
Councilman Serko?
Yes.
Councilman Burke?
Yes.
Councilman Abdellawad?
Yes.
Councilman Berensen?
Yes.
Councilman Holman?
Yes.
And Councilman Barber?
Yes.
Thank you. When we get done in executive session, we will be adjourned.[1796.63]